Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for being with us tonight. For our July the third regularly scheduled city council meeting. I will call to order at this time. Please stand with me now for our invitation. A moment of silence. And a pledge of allegiance.
To our body heads, one moment of silence for our citizens that have passed on. Oh heavenly Father, we come today to thank you for the safe, tranquil grace here to the municipal court field in Ashburn, Georgia, asking for the safe, tranquil grace that's our state places. Lord, we ask you that the city council, the mayor, the city attorney, and the interim city manager make the best decisions for the city of rest as well as the citizens of Ashburn. Lord, we ask for you to keep us covered in your grace and mercy. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, we invite all the municipal members to the Lord's Prayer, to the same invitation, one and five, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, may we have a roll call?
Councilmember Jonathan Barrett.
I'm here.
Councilmember Michelle Smith.
Present.
Mayor Sandra Love.
Present.
Councilmember Henry McPierce.
Present.
Councilmember Fuller Jordan.
Present.
Councilmember John Vargas.
Present.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is Mr. Freddie Burton. He will come forward today. Uh, he is going to present an award to our council member, Mr. Henry McPierce.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, uh, the community of Ashburn. Uh, my name is Freddie Burton. Uh, so, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and the community of Ashburn. Uh, my name is Freddie Burton, and I'm from George Group Association, also known as DMA. I wish to ask the answer first, because last time I said that GMAs, I thought I was from George, uh, Group of America. So, but we're here today to, uh, present awards to Councilmember Pierce. Uh, Councilmember Pierce is completing one program that's been created at George Group Association called the Fiscal Year Program. It is an eighth month program, um, that starts in October and completes in late. This is the third program that we had, the third program, sorry, that we had, the Councilmember Pierce doing the third program. Uh, the program focuses more trying to get our leaders to be more understanding of how we're working practical, inspirational, influential, in their careers. Uh, so those are the things I'd like to teach them how to do, understand the collective leadership, understanding emotional intelligence, transformational leadership. Uh, there you go, it's to understand the really parts of what makes the government work. Uh, when it goes past, when it comes from financial management of the government, of the safety of the government, community, and not the government, of the government, community, social engagement, and human resource practices. And then the end of the program is almost like a college semester, because the end program, each participant has to complete the capstone project. And a capstone project, that's the most, uh, everything they've learned throughout the last eight months, or something that they actually learned, that they want to bring to their community, or enhance programs that are within their community. Um, so we decided to see Councilmember Pierce program. Uh, our capstone project is really about developing the youth council, or really gauging the gap to see into that program. So that's a good program, we're looking to see how the program develops. Uh, so on behalf of I see, uh, my director, I answered. Uh, we're here tonight to present certificate to Councilmember Pierce for completing our program. Now, this program's program's a little different, um, because this program actually has to be two in one. Uh, because it used to be a missed year, a permanent program, uh, but we didn't have to change the program, we're done on off that one. So now we're doing a missed year, a career worker response program. So we were able to start off with one, but we finished with the other. So this class actually has two certificates, uh, for completing the programs. And I've been here to present your certificate for completion for completing our missed year program. So thank you for your support of the program, and to, uh, be one of eighty members that across the state that amount of members of our local association for our missed year program. So it's time for our municipal citizens to sign.
Thank you, we are so, so proud of you for having Sandra Pierce on this council. She cares so much about her community, and she works hard every day. And I'm thankful for her. And she's an amazing asset to our council board. Thank you. Thank you, Lord. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the budget. May I have a motion?
I'll put it to the table down, and there were several, I mean, it changes. But then it changed to, um, we have a thinking part from Mr. Howard Jordan and Mr. Charles Jordan. We need to add that, we also need to add Chief Roberts, who's running into the prison of the police officers. And Councilmember Andrew Pierce receives a hard copy of proper mention. I need a person to say.
May I have a motion to approve the changes on the agenda? I'll make a motion. May I have a second?
Sir.
To approve, thank you very much. Mr. Walker, I didn't realize you had joined us.
Uh, you are the next item on the agenda, if you would like to come forward. Hey, I, I got, uh, I'm very simple. And I'd like to know, what are the requirements, and, uh, how many people live in a house? And I'd like to know, we, uh, can we put a, a gate, it's, uh, Roger, to put a gate around that area where you had those sofas just laying out, and when the city looked bad all the time, and be sometime a week or two before we pick it up? Another place, they, they got a gate, they got a fence, where they put it in and lock it up, and it don't show. So we might get with Roger, we, the city can decide to put a gate around where we can cover them sofas and stuff, right? The city look a mess. It look bad. The, the city of Ashburn, I, I rode down today, you wouldn't think of the Fourth of July coming up. So I, I think we got a guy that's supposed to do it, don't we? The guy that goes to go around his state of yards, and, and, and the cars, and the, uh, make sure the neighborhoods up, up the park?
A compliance officer?
Right, right, do we have one though?
Yes, sir, we do, I'm not sure at this time, he, he's under the, uh, police department? Uh, Mr. Joe Jimmerson? Okay, we, yes, that he is.
As, as a citizen type, Phil, I, I would like for you all, uh, I don't know if you're full time or part time, but the way the city of Ashburn look, you need to be a part time daddy, or, or a full time daddy with a part time police. But, cause I, I'm pretty sure, and I would think some of the, some of the leaders are riding the town, and they don't care one, because the police committee may matter. And I care about my neighbor, I care about my town, and I don't know if they care, if some of them just getting a check, or what, they're just here. But if you ride through there, that should give, some of them should get a check back. And, and, and I'm, you know, I, I, uh, I, I, here Sheriff Key Holly, he need help. And I see why he need help. I came back to town the last couple of days, and I wrote this paper. I'm just one of the one that not afraid to tell them that the city look bad. And if they get, therefore a check, we just pay them and put some more people in them seats. They want to make Ashburn great again. And I'm not.
Thank you, Mr. Walker, and I totally understand what you're saying. Uh, and, uh, I think it's something that this council can address. Uh, perhaps we can, like I said, we do have a compliance officer. Uh, but, and he's under the direction of the police chief, correct?
He's under the seal. He's under the police station.
Oh, he's not, he's not under your direction?
He's supposed to be.
He's under the direction of the city clerk? Well, that may be something that we need to take a look at, as far as, as redirect.
Not city clerk, the deputy chair, she was there when she was the city manager, she put the compliance officer under the city manager.
It's under the city manager? Okay, well, unfortunately, at this point, we don't have a city manager. But.
I think, no, man. I didn't, I, I gotta say something about that. And I, I'm not saying that I'm not doing a good job. But right now, we don't have a city manager, so we got five councilmen to get paid. That's you better make some decision too. You can't say the way on the city manager, but if we don't have him. If we're in that bad a shape, we, after our year today, they need to have a meeting, they need to go in and hire a city manager, because we got people that put in application to be the city manager. And regardless of what color they, we need to hire them. Because the city hard for a city run without a city manager when the council don't make the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker, we'll take, take your, uh, remarks under consideration, I assure you. Thank you.
Um, can I speak on that? Uh, when you came to the, um, light part, it's something we was focused on at one point in time, very heavy. Um, whilst I was, because I had no support from no one to the death for me. Um, which is very concerning, uh, when you're a citizen in Ashburn, because that's something that's been played in our community, and if we eradicate that problem, I mean, we can move forward and actually dedicate the city as a whole. Um, it's been several things that have been tried to implement in the city, that I just really didn't have the support to do so. I mean, we're like this, inspiring council, it's up to being like this. Um, the energy appears more toward being, doing something performant, you know, things that create headline news and put the spotlight on someone solo. First has been, it being really transformative, where we create things, um, create growth and development for our community. So until the citizen, um, change their mindset, and, and start to get back to someone, select someone before they get to the vote, and then that, we gonna continue to be in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Walker, I'd like to speak on this.
Do you have a comment, sir?
Oh. I'm also, uh, very concerned about the city, the trash pickup and everything else. All of us hire, the, uh, we gotta pick up the trash. So, shouldn't no one person be going, it's everybody. Cause I said, it was crazy, I did from day one, hire somebody to pick up the trash, and we pick up the trash ourselves. And the trash never was behind, and it never was switched on, because I did. And the city been looking like crap ever since we hired, the guys we got. Ever since we hired Go. And the thing is, we just gotta get rid of Go, and then get someone that willing to pick up the trash. I think we ought to go back to the city picking it up, because we didn't have no problem. Uh, I had seven people, we didn't grade our roads, and everything, kept up. Now, we got people, and we got people that supposed to pick up the trash, they ain't making it. So, I, I feel the citizen. We just gotta hire somebody, put somebody there that willing to pick up the trash. And I think I see the attorney already working on getting rid of them. Cause you just can't find nobody to just get rid of them. You gotta do it the legal way. And I see the attorney working on that. And that's all I can say.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson, what you have said is something we probably should take under consideration. I appreciate it. At this moment, if there are no other, uh, comments from the public, I will ask for a motion to approve the June fifth, twenty twenty five council meeting minutes.
I propose motion to approve the June fifth, two thousand twenty five meetings.
I have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Uh, we, um, before we go any further into our meeting, I want to, um, make y'all aware of a lovely thanking note that we got from the family of the late Mr. Joseph Jordan Senior and the Jordan family. Howard and Charles Jordan, along with their sixteen siblings. Thank us all for the support that the city of Ashburn, along with the mayor, city council, and city manager have shared with our family during the loss of our father. So again, thank you, city of Ashburn, for all your love and support. Howard, Jordan, and the Jordan family. You are very, very welcome, Mr. Jordan. I'm so sorry for your loss.
Hey, everyone, I'm Keith Robson, um, God has a public safety. I'm proud of people for, for you very long. Just want to introduce some new hires to the community, to the mayor of the council. Uh, if you will, please stand. I'll put some front there. I'm missing two, uh, two of, one has to work tonight, and the other one, uh, lives kind of far away, so he didn't make it. These guys who are dressed in the white shirts and the brown pants are cadets. They are going, currently going through the pre-academy. They just finished up on yesterday, and they start the academy on Monday. Actually wish them well, uh, they put in a lot of hard work, a lot of training, a lot of conditioning, a lot of studying. And, uh, these are a great group of young men, they're gonna do very well. Uh, this guy right here, Mr. Stuggs, he's a five-year veteran out of Cordeo, Georgia. Uh, come with a, a wealth of training, knowledge and experience. A very great guy, good people skills, has great, uh, levels of commendations, from doing trust great deeds to finish the community. And I, I believe he gonna be a great asset to the city of Ashburn as well. Uh, right here, Mr. Jake Bogan, uh, he has desire to put himself for all his life, as since being a little kid. I try my best to, um, convince him to do something different, but even against me that, he wanted to be a police officer, and, uh, just, this way he standing right now. This guy, Mr. Lavender, right here, is the son of a elder lavender. Quiet, but, uh, very, very humble, uh, very sharp, uh, sharp on his feet. Go-getter, hard worker. Mr. Gordon, he knows things in law enforcement, his father, he been in law enforcement for maybe thirty years or so, uh, out of Tipton, Georgia. A great young man, these guys are really working really hard. Ask y'all to welcome these guys, and granted, these guys are gonna go to the academy, wish them love.
Thank you all very, very much, we're happy to have you with us. Again, thank you. Michelle? Let's hear it for her.
This is the proclamation that was done last month, speaking June fifth. For Pierce, we didn't have the higher traffic, but we got it today, and we want to present it to her.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce, you're an excellent. All right, I hope y'all have taken the time to look at our, um, recommended twenty-five, twenty-six budget for the city of Ashburn, because we have got to approve that budget. Uh, now, if there are any questions or comments, once you, since you've had a chance to look over the budget, uh, now is the time. If not, I will ask for a motion to approve, approve the fiscal year, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six budget for the city of Ashburn.
Mr. Walker, should we miss it? I propose motion to approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget.
I have a motion, may I have a second?
Aye, sir.
I have a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the alcohol beverage license for B and P Food Mark Incorporated, uh, located on South Main Street, beer and wine retail only. Is there a representative here from, um, this business? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve the alcohol beverage license.
Chief Charles, you're paying check, okay? I propose a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, may I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. And please, please know that all the background checks and everything, uh, our police chief has taken care of that, and they were, they passed, uh, all the requirements for this license. Mr. Councilmember Jonathan Perry would like to discuss the water bill due date and council, and, I'm sorry, cutoff time.
Yes, ma'am. The first thing I would like to address is the actual due date of the water bills. Uh, that's one of the things that has been concerning me. For the city of Ashburn, we mail out our water bills on the first of the month, and our payment is due on the tenth, and after the tenth, there's a ten percent charge. So, uh, looking into this, I contacted, uh, four other cities, um, that have around the same population, around four thousand, forty-five hundred, and asked them what their, uh, what their cycle was. Most of them was at least twenty days or more, or, or all of them were twenty days or more. Um, Eastman, for instance, mails out on the first, payment's due on the twentieth. Um, Lions, Georgia, they mail out the eighteenth of the month, it's due on the tenth of the next month. Um, equipment's the same way, it goes out of the first, and fees are not tacked on until the twentieth of the month. And so, um, I'm making the recommendation that we move our due date to the fifteenth. So, obviously, with mailing going out the way that it is, uh, one of the things that concerns me is, I know some people do not like paying the bill until they get a paper copy in hand. We have people that, um, that are not necessarily tech savvy. We also have businesses that some cannot write checks until they get a bill, and it takes them a few days to get checks written. So I think this will help our citizens out, plus our businesses out, that we will not have a ten percent charge until the fifteenth of the month. And so, uh, I make a recommendation that our water bills are now due on the fifteenth instead of the tenth. I make a motion to back that.
Can I ask a question before you make a motion?
No, yes.
Yeah, okay, this, discussion, please.
Yes, did you check with the, uh, the girls at the office, and make sure that everything was okay with them, and the way you got the system set up?
Yes, they, because of the current computer system we have, they actually have to manually put in that ten percent charge. So they said that it would not affect moving this to the fifteenth.
Okay, yes.
Sure.
Comes out a question I had.
But, but, yes, but we did check with them, that is.
Uh, hmm, my recommendation is that we do a little research on this, because if you, if you set the date back before you start collecting the penalty, I, I, we need to know how it's going to affect us financially. Um, manpower wise, because that's gonna change the, the time that they will have to go out and start turning peoples.
Well, I, I'm not recommending changing the cutoff date. I only recommending changing the due date, the cutoff date would stay the same.
The due date?
Right, the, because right now, we currently, the bill is due on the tenth.
That's right.
And so, I'm, I'm asking that we move that to the fifteenth. The cutoff date is currently the twenty-fifth, and I'm not asking to change that, just, just the date. We're, we're basically, currently, right now, we give people ten days to pay it on time, and fifteen days to pay it late. So now, we give the people fifteen days to pay it on time, and ten days to pay it late. So the cutoff date does not change.
Okay, I understand, yeah, comments, please.
I guess put a motion on the floor.
You put a motion on the floor, I second. We can do a trial basis and see what happens.
My, my issue with this is that we probably, I think we should do some research and see how much it's going, how much loss there will be in our revenue if we make this change.
Well, they charged within five days, we worried about revenue. It'll be in five days. And put it on the floor when we vote for it, pass, pass, it's done, it's done.
It did, it passed, I second. Do a roll call, remember to do a roll call.
Mr. Walker, do you have a comment?
I, I think, now, I'm, I'm gonna tell you where I pay mine, okay? We get out one like on the twenty-third or twenty-fourth, then it due by the tenth, and, and then, you know, we're gonna pay later, you got the tenth, but we give it a good month, and it, it, we give it a good month, like twenty or something, so you already got it. You already got your bill. So by the end of time, end of month, those are gonna get checked, they're gonna, you know, uh, retire people. So by the end of time, end of the month, those are gonna get checked, they're gonna, you know, uh, retire people. They already got it ten days before the first. And then it, I mean, that's where we go out, so I don't even say. It's good, I live, I think they should be going something to the first. I'm talking about city that I. And a roll call.
I, uh, I don't want to sound harsh and, and, but I will with, with what I'm fixing to say. I think this change is going to create a considerable loss of income for the city of Ashburn. But it's something we can, that's the council's decision.
Do a roll call, though, please.
John, council member Jonathan Baker?
Uh, yes.
Council member Michelle Reese Smith?
Yes.
Council member Andrew Hears?
Yes.
Council member Corey Jordan?
Yes.
Council member John Burgess?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
I'll be right back. Mr. Walker, I forgot, um, you said about the trash pickup, um, I forgot a while about we did, uh, it was the grant that was presented to the council. That was gonna give us like five thousand dollars to do like an amnesty day, um, for everybody. Each five councilmen, we got a bins, a trash bin, they could, they place it, they place it in the city. And, uh, and after we did that grant, it was gonna be another grant for another five thousand dollars for, for abandoned buildings. And I just want citizens to know that no one until my left supported this. So again, that's just, that's concerning that you have a council member who don't wanna bring things in the city that make the city better sustainably for everybody.
I, I don't, I don't. Oh, I, I, I think, I think electric fish is something, I don't know what that means. Electric fish means you're gonna do the, all you can do is make the city better. And that's all you can do to make yourself better. So if you ain't capable of doing the job to make Ashburn better, when I leave, leave with me. Because y'all better make the city, everybody who smoke, you wanna sit back and, and have to make the city. You got to make the city and live with it. Because some of y'all done that both for years. And, 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 and Captain Jordan, and I'm calling you out, you make the turn and come up your road. Gerard Lee Douglas, y'all look like a junkyard. And I know you see, but you don't say nothing. We got to forgive our friendship and kinfolk and do our job. So we're not gonna do our job because what we did was gonna hurt our kinfolk and our friend who got the wrong job.
Hey, just a footnote, the old grants have to be managed, they have to be managed.
Gotta take that money.
Free money.
Free money. And, and, I would say, well, that's the reason you have time all the way.
May have one year. Uh, there being no further discussion on this, this item, we will move on to the discussion of animal control deposition for all domesticated animals, dogs and cats. Chief?
The animal shelters are going pretty good, we have, we lacking three more kennels going inside, inside the animal shelter. Uh, we have rooms built on, bathroom that's been built. Right now, we carry only house the animals, uh, they have nowhere to take them at the moment. Working, working on contract as well to get that, get that situation. Um, other than that, it's coming on pretty good. Came along the way, it used to be a big empty space, we nothing on the inside of it. Now, we have walls, we have kennels, we have bathroom, we have AC, we have lights and water, so it's coming along just fine. Still got ways to go, but we're making progress.
Thank you, chief, yes, there have been a lot of improvements out at the animal control center, uh, but, um, I don't think that really addresses, I don't know if it adds to this, um, item to be on the agenda.
That's the one speaker up.
Yes.
We've been so long. So right now, we don't have nowhere to take our, take our animals at, we housing them in our shelter and getting over, over, overloaded. So I reached out to, uh, uh, Animal Kill Shelter in Dunton, Georgia, Coffee County, um, where they're charging the feeder, they would treat the dogs, they would adopt the dogs out and dispose them if need to, if they're sick, they're gonna be treating it, things of that nature, um. Per dog is a hundred and fifty dollars per dog, but it's, it's nine hundred dollars for any dog a month. He does set fee of nine hundred dollars, um, they'll take any dogs, any cats that we have and still do the same thing. So he proposed a contract, uh, that he gave us, I don't have the witness at the moment, but it's a contract that we have and it should, should be our package to not overlook at it, take a look at it and see y'all on it, put that right. Cause right now, we just have, we don't know where to take our dogs at and then, and we can't, we're not equipped to like nurture them and you know, give them, we kinda treat them for sickness and shocks and all that.
How many dogs do you think we will, are, will be in our dog, uh, month that we would need to use this facility? Or use this animal shelter?
Right now, um, I know Mr. Raymond, he's holding off on the dog calls. We have like six out there now and he hold back because without anyone to take them.
Right, so what would your, would your recommendation be, the nine hundred per month would say, I mean?
Mostly after we, we.
Okay, we, we can't get that many dog, that would be a question, okay.
Right now, nine hundred dollars a month is out there in the, in the, in the dog kennel now, just where we have them, he's not even full.
Mr. Man, did you know if this one in, if we just handle budget?
So this, this contract would, would, um, cost us nine hundred dollars a month for the Alapahal Animal Control Shelter to do away with our stray cats and dogs?
So, you know, right now, we only equipped to keep the cats and dogs for a week, five days. After that, we supposed to take them somewhere else, um, for like shelter or treatment and things of that nature. And right now, dogs standing found two weeks, sometime a month because without anywhere to take them at.
Was this put in your budget?
No.
So, do we no longer euthanize the animals?
No.
After a certain amount of time?
No, ma'am, we don't, we don't do that.
Since the budget is a concern, you can always amend it.
Economically, amend it and change it. It can't be amended to January.
Okay, this, this is something we're probably gonna have to do some research. Uh, what, what, what are we doing now?
We just house them and feed them and, um.
We're feeding them, housing them, we're not euthanizing them.
But you're, but you're saying that we're not able to fulfill all our calls because of the limitations right now?
Right.
Do we adopt them if someone, no?
But this facility will attempt to adopt them, correct?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, well, I think we're probably out of compliance right now with our animal shelter and, and we need to check into, if you will, chief, find out what we are required to do?
I, I already have, yes, ma'am.
Okay, you have done that.
That's why we, we, right now, all we probably do is house the cats and dogs for five days. Kinda like a holding shelter, not a, not a treatment shelter.
So if we were contracted with the Alapahal Animal Control Shelter, they can adopt or rescue or euthanize any or all animals upon arrival?
Yes.
Cats must be in a trap, yada, yada, uh, the contract rate would be a hundred and fifty dollars per?
So that's per animal or a flat rate of nine hundred per month, which is best to me?
Nine hundred dollars a month.
Yes.
I think maybe we need to find out what it's costing us now. Um, Miss Hill, if you can research that for us. Um, uh, and perhaps put this off until, until another meeting, until we can do some research.
I'll, I'll, I'm trying around surrounding counties. Uh, we used to take it to Sylvester, they're not taking dogs anymore. I reached out to, uh, Chris County, they're overloaded, animals as well, so at this point, we have lived to the hocks.
So Sylvester or Tifton no longer?
No, ma'am, we can't take them there at all, but.
All right, well, let us do a little research, thank you, we'll get back with you as soon as possible.
But, miss, but we're currently, to get into compliance, we need to approve this, correctly? Correctly? Right. Cause that, cause you've already done the research, yeah, correct, yeah, okay. Um, mayor, not to overstep, but I, I think I would make a motion that we go with option A. I mean, I know that, I know we're kinda getting stuck in a holding pattern for a while, second.
It's an additional nine hundred dollars a month.
Well, we've gotta do something when they're animal, we can't, we, we have to, we're supposed to provide a service to the community and right now, we're not able to, so we need to get back into compliance.
Any comments from other council members?
Mr. Trapp, you gonna bank nobody else out, we'll chief you?
Yeah, I'm first all around.
Sir, I was.
Yeah, you just not taking dogs.
I know Sylvester, they heard it, we, she didn't dog, kinda they asked if they ground theirs.
And we, we just not saw it for that kind of, kind of, don't care.
So we just gonna use our facility just for, just for holding?
Yes, that's not always been holding facility and we, we used to use Sylvester to, to its container.
So the shelter that we're using now, when, when an animal is picked up, will it go directly to whomever we contract with?
Well, a- after, um, five, after five days, after we hold it for five days, again, we take them to, um, who we contract with.
So we do keep them for a certain amount of time in case somebody wants to claim them? Any other comments?
There's a motion on the floor, I second.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor to contract with the Alapahal Animal Control Shelter for one year with a rate of nine hundred dollars per month, which is option A.
I'm about to to the right, make a motion, I second you.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Uh, we have three vacancies on the, um, planning and zoning board, um, and we need to discuss acquainting three more members because we're not actually in compliance right now because we don't have enough members now. We don't have a lot of activity in planning and zoning, um, so, uh, what are you, what are y'all's feelings about this?
Do we have any recommendations from the committee of people that rolled off or people that are currently serving, that their terms expire and things like that?
No, we, we don't have any, any activity at all. I think it might be something that we could advertise and ask for, uh, people who are interested in serving to fill out an application, would that be the thing to do?
Yes, ma'am, that will be, right up here. Miss Andrew, could you hold something and advertise it, please, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We'll, that, we'll do that and see where, where the council comes out. Uh, there being.
Uh, sir, I speak for you.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Earlier, just a while ago, I know y'all don't know what's going on, so I tell the whole truth, I tell it all. Uh, the reason we didn't get the dumpsters was it wasn't put in the city name, but our attorney had advised us that, and Mr. Ben Baker don't play, we already sued us once.
That's not true.
And, and the reason we didn't apply for it, cause I was for the trash pickup. But they saying address or something was straight on there.
No, that's not true, Jane.
But what was it mean? It was some reason that.
No, it was put in the city name, how could the city get it from place to city name?
Not the grant, but the address or the name or something who was over it.
That's why we have legal, that's why we have legal, who that was, um, record, they saying it was good, it gives a, a more, a work of, a more representation. It was put in the city name, you not telling the truth.
But see, the terms said more.
He said, if anything is wrong, it more like a more, a, a unethical thing, but we can't speak on unethical, there's been so many things unethical been done here that take away from the city. So if anything gonna be done, uh, to get to the city, that should, that should be a problem.
But I was, you know, me, you.
No, no, yeah, yeah, you worked for that, but when it came to time to talk, it was silent.
Cause that's what they said, that's what it was about.
No, silent is a form of agreements, right? You just keep up the second time. So it was nothing illegal about what I done.
No, I didn't say it was illegal, that, that I didn't say.
But yeah, if anybody, you trust anybody, it's Sheldon Smith.
This is birds, but everybody know I'm telling like you did.
No, you didn't, you didn't just tell like, you just told a path for, you don't know the full story, you're assuming.
I just know what I told.
I can take, I can bring your seat, I can not receive, that's not a fair assumption. I have receipts.
That ain't gonna solve, that one gonna solve our, just one dumpster, peace, we gonna solve our problems.
No, it's not about the dumpster, it's about the amnesty day, it's for like, having a moral in our community. Five thousand dollars, man, y'all didn't talk for it, you say you talked for it.
I didn't go for it, I'm telling the reason, I'm telling the reason why.
You doing damage control now?
I ain't no damage control. Everybody got their mind, they want, they want, they want, they want to fire, council fire different minds.
And that's why we divide, it's nothing about citizens, it's all about you.
All right, gentlemen, um, if there's no further discussion, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of personnel.
To go into executive session for fifty dash fourteen dash three being two for personnel.
I have a motion, may I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, we will be in executive session. I don't know that any action will be taken when we come back. But, um, I will have to excuse everyone.